What's up everybody, today we're gonna be looking at trying to find more check raises on the flop from the big line at forty and thirty big line. So like the way we usually do it. The first. Check raise, we're gonna try to find like the ones that are based on our top pair, so whenever we have a good kicker. Say the eight kicker or better and nine kicker and even we can dig down to the seven kicker sometimes. So we're gonna try to check raise from the big line a lot of top pairs. And then we're gonna have other rules. That are gonna have a. So here we have an open ender. If that's really small, I think this is more of a call. I would like to check raise a hand like. Ace eight of spade here. More than or a hand like ace five with spade. Cause then ace five you get a better ace to fold, you have an over card, you can get a backdoor flush where this is just an open ender, it could be a raise, but I would just call it.
Eight nine is a better raise too. It's the same thing open ender, but it's got two overs to middle pair.
Yeah, also I didn't pay attention, but that the bottom end of it, right? Eight nine, as Joey said, is the upper end of it, that's always a better.
And we said that it's this hand is to trump the check raise for this. Do we call or it's not the right concept? Like this.
No, no, we're gonna call it, we check raise and then we face some aggression, I think we need to continue. At least create more.
One way I think is a good way to think about it, like it's seven, six, six, five, five, four, if you get those two on the flop. And it's disconnected with the rest of the board, we got automatically know we're gonna have it. Lot of check raises, so you probably gotta find. All the obvious ones at the very least. Which would include this.
Okay. So now we shut down.
But now we're facing a bet, so the kind of thing you wanna look for when you're looking for a call here, like a diamond would be great to have. And and then we're gonna call probably all jacks or nines or maybe some sevens. But six and four, I don't think we call any of these. Actually do sometimes. Okay.
I'm never calling her.
Well, Dan, it go check, check on the turn.
Yes, uh, yes.
Yeah, when it goes check, check on the turn, we can go lower. Yeah, no, call in.
So now we're thirty big lines, not not forty. Facing EP, this is. Probably a good call. Anybody raising here?
At forty, I think I had three start three benedict.
Maybe raising with the lower people.
I think I would raise a stem, not this one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind the race, yeah, cuz it's, yeah.
That's how I look.
I wouldn't, uh, this is the one actually raises more than a stem, okay.
Ace two also a bit too easy by small bridge.
Alright.
Is there a reason why ace nine raises more than ace ten there?
Yeah, because it's stronger. Is it ace ten is stronger basically.
The bottom of the under the gun range is suited ten.
Okay.
Offsuit then, so the way.
Yeah, oh, I meant off suited, I'm sorry.
The way Matt Affleck phrase it, like you wanna use one pip under the bottom of the villain's opening ring, for here he opens. Offsuit ten, so we wanna use like. Knights, some knights.
Gotcha.
Um, so we check. So we said we were gonna look for more check rate. Uh, this is a. Kind of a scary board. But we have a nine kicker, did we check raise this one?
Against T T G.
I think it's. It's some frequency, but I think it also calls a lot too.
Two things going against us here, right? Against early position, which is like dangerous and then. I guess this type of texture, you know, where this is not a great kicker.
It's also the bed sizes.
Need to continue, but do we raise?
I'll never raise it, man, I I just wanna get out of this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not raising like.
I think we are crushed here. There's nothing to do really, we just call and hope that we are alive.
Yeah, we have some raising frequently. So let's just quickly see, no one's like. Very comfortable with it, but yeah. Yeah, there's a sliver of raising with our nine kicker here. So like based on like eight kicker or better, you're supposed to find some raising sometimes.
I think in game we can totally discount raising because people have much tighter ranges from B to G in game anyway.
Yeah, but we're kinda short as well, right? I guess PR is.
Yeah, that's, that's true. That's true.
And he's for sure range betting.
So what, so we check call, so we're gonna check again. Okay, we're gonna just give it to them.
I think. I would fold actually here.
Often changes.
Nothing changed.
We don't get to fold top pair at this PR two and. Thanks. Unless I.
Wow.
All planning.
Oh, that, so yeah, my thinking is, so so why I was thinking about folding is. Uh, just we are so much crushed, uh. So I'm not thinking about just we have top area, usually yes, I I like to call usually top pairs to the river and maybe it just fall to the rivers. But like in in this, we are so much crushed that I would start thinking about folding even in GTO lines here. Much more, but but with this specific board that I'm thinking.
So also like I was watching like Bert Stephen's stream and Friday. He said we should overfold the double barrel, so this will probably a good spot to overfold.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Maybe he gives up. Oh. Oh, okay, okay, I'm a station.
I think it's good on the turn that we don't have a spade cuz then we don't block his like blasts.
The thing is if he's already folding on the turn, some portion, I think it already reflects that it becomes very bad to call rivers.
It's like our kicker is bad as well. Like we have a back blocking effect, would rather call off with A three here. A three is.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't have blocking effects, cuz the nine and the eight are. Somehow not good. The nine and the eight, so. Okay, so it probably means on the turn. He's not betting his nine or his eight.
I assume it's like we're not blocking the blast with ace deuce, but maybe with a nine me, I don't know.
Yeah, it's exactly. Hmm. What do we do here? You just call?
I think it might, it could be a shove.
I think.
Queen jack to them.
I think it's uh, some portion of raising and some calling.
Okay. That's mostly raised.
It's mostly raised.
Yeah, queen, I I feel like queen. Oh, there's no show, it's on another show.
Wow, okay. They're very similar to forty big line, except we shove a lot here. The blasts are almost the same as forty.
So, this is a check raise.
What, what size? Seven? I'm good with seven here, but the five is probably fine as well.
Yeah, I think.
I I like five more, I like five more.
Okay.
Yeah, pasta's raise, yeah.
Now we should have bet. What size? I think in game I'm a little bit too inclined to go thirteen here, I think the solution is more around nine.
Yeah, I like more around ten personally here.
Okay.
Oh, my, I'm half plot here.
I I really.
Yeah, I like, I like half, but maybe it's even going smaller actually.
I I really. Go fifty-five percent here. But maybe I'm guilty of going a bit larger. After checking, seems like it checks, I see we'll just check job.
If it's checking.
Yeah, we can't call it all. Was there any, was there any checks on turn?
Yeah, thirty percent.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
I assume it's just check ripping it in though.
On that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, we are so much high, we are so much high, high up and it it the SPR is uh, pretty low already, so I was thinking. Uh, even about checking there, but I didn't saw the answer. I was so much focused on the bet. That's very interesting.
I mean, it's nice when you check cuz then you give them room to bluff, right?
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Yeah, alright, check down.
And the nine is also pretty good for him too, and we're so, we're usually crushing him. Yeah, very interesting, very interesting.
Alright, so here we're gonna defend. So we get a pair of board, so we're gonna see like on pair of boards, the big blind mostly defend by check raising, so what kind of hand do we check raise here? So forget queen eight, cuz that's not gonna be as fun, let's say we have like queen five of clubs. And queen five of diamonds, would you check raise a hand like queen five of clubs or queen five of diamonds there?
Diamonds.
I probably wouldn't take any of these, I would uh, much more check raise something like uh, seven, six suited here. Uh, five, seven, five, three. Twos.
Yep, I think you have also some uh, queen.
Two, ace two, ace two, ace three, ace six. Type kinda stuff.
See, like Jack ten.
The, I I like about half of the things you've said in this amount of like. I think ace five, ace four, ace deuce is a great one, I think ace six isn't. I could be wrong, I think we wanna check raise suited fives with a backdoor flush. Like if we have like a nice five suited, that's the nuts, sir.
The five side.
Anything.
I think ace six is there, but ace seven would.
Like I would find anything that's back.
Oh, 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 oh. I'm not so bad.
So the the number one thing I want people to notice here is that we mostly defend by raising, we don't really. Call that much on pair of boards from the big line in these kinda scenario, mostly we're gonna play, we're gonna raise. Okay? And then we wanna raise like these wheels, these wheels are amazing. Uh, wanna raise our top pairs like we said. Usually around the seven kicker, but on these type of texture, it doesn't matter, it goes almost every top pair. Usually wanna raise like a lot of five X. Because the the when the board is a a four, you wanna use like the card right above. That blocks combos from our opponents. So here what blocks the four X? From our opponent would be like um. Uh, the the one that comes to mind is really the ace five, cuz then you block ace four and you block five four. So that's, that's one of the best ones, but then you wanna dig, you you need to find some some suited like buys there as well. No? Suited fives, obviously five, if you have a five. Yeah.
One of the. One of the things that. Yeah, okay, go on.
Yeah, I take all that section you were just looking at has a lot of backdoor, backdoor equity too.
Yeah, so it's like.
Definitely. You you pick the ones with the backdoor flush.
Queen ten, queen nine, jack nine, ten nine. Backdoor, backdoor.
So mostly, one of the things that I used to also think is like uh, where are the folds come from? When we don't call everything, we, I always like to think, okay, where are the, where are the folds also coming from? And then like going thinking about ranges.
Hands that flop the nuts. Of don't uh, can have outs to the. Nut hands. It looks like mostly backdoor flush draws, especially if they wrap around the four, all your offsuit shit falls unless it's got an over to the king or it's a pair basically.
So here's something I want you guys to notice, here is like king four four, but if we make it king, king four. Uh, without the flush draw, like king, king four, we're gonna have some fours that are gonna be chick raising. Okay? So you see here, we have whenever the board is like this. We have the bottom player that is chick raising a bunch as well. So we're gonna have that, like the, we wanna have like on pair of board, the upper dangler to the pair of card. Uh, our top pair, that's almost always true, so we we don't need to write them and then uh, are the like the bottom card. If we own the bottom card. It's usually a very good check raise, as we see here, all the fours on king, king four. Um, so these are good, good places to look for for check raise on pair of boards. The in general at GTO, like a player should strive to check raise like twenty percent of the time, almost. It's very tough to reach, very, very tough, so if we're gonna try to reach our twenty percent check raise, we need to dig on every category. But that makes you very tough to play against as well. Uh, here I like a three bet.
I assume you like check raising way less if it's like deep stacked, cuz when you're shallow, you wanna check raise more, right?
Uh, I do it as often. You know, more shallow, you do it more for sure, a greater portion of your range wants to do it, but I think there's a lot of merit in doing it a lot.
Yeah, the thing with with the, the thing why we do it more, uh, when we're more shallow is we need more protection and our four is actually stronger there cuz we can. Make uh, all the like hands that still have equity, but are behind uh, fold or either either just give us value.
Ooh.
Hey, uh. Player has more difficult uh. Time to realize exactly if he's short stack.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
That's the main reason.
Like a racer.
I call this against early possession.
Yeah, I feel it might be mixed in between cool and free but small, but.
Alright, so on flush draw boards, nice, we're gonna be able to look at that, so is this a combo, say, say better.
He bet large.
Just a second, I'm gonna help him out. Uh, say he goes for.
Who's like in most games.
He wants to go big, so he goes three. Okay, he goes three. So is this a hand you guys wanna check raise? Or is this more of a check call?
I I think it's too good to check, check raise, like.
Hundred percent agree with you. This is.
Yeah, check call.
Yeah, exactly. And then. What do we do with like a hand like? King deuce, a spade.
Yeah, raise.
Like king four spade that has some interaction with the six, five, four and then.
Then you would check raise.
Yeah, king four gets a better king to fold.
Like, like queen A, I'll definitely check raise. I like stuff like that.
Uh, queen A feels like it's the middle of the deck, might be a little.
Maybe calling, yeah.
Uh, film does have.
I think the, the good thing with king two, king three is that we unblock also uh, his cards that can uh, you know, interact with the board there, so having a queen here is really bad.
So say we have a hand like ace, jack of spade here, do we raise?
No.
No, still check call.
Check call, and then say we have a hand like ace seven spade.
Check raise.
Now we probably want to check raise more.
I think ace four spades makes a better check raise than ace seven.
Okay, one last question here, okay, same type of hand like. Ace seven offsuit. With the ace of spade.
Our check raise, although.
So that's one of uh, one of the things we can like easily find, if we just have the ace of spade here, it's a pretty good check raise. I don't know if it's a good check raise against this sides. But in general, having a hand like ace seven with the ace of spade here. It's a pretty strong check raise, just having the ace of spade.
Oh yeah, for sure.
Okay, so a hand like king, queen suited is a pure call. But a hand like king four suited is a pure raise. Uh, the wheels, blah, 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 so we have that pretty well. Um, so basically. Here. With a single high card. Of the suit. We can check raise. Um, and then the way we wanna structure. Uh. Are are flush draws. The best ones call. And the high low ones. Raise because they get. Better to fold. So that's pretty much the the rule on flush.
Yeah, I think this was like in the masterclass, just like you wanna raise the ones you don't mind folding. Just pretty simple.
Ooh, I missed a lead here, it's mostly a lead. Guys, are you doing a lot here?
Seven is better for our range, so I think we have a lot of leading on, but uh.
Okay. I don't know, I'm never doing that.
I also do it not enough.
Cuz we started the hand by slow play, so I'm like.
I think sometimes it's, I think sometimes it's very hard to find this uh.
Ooh. All in?
Even though, even though it seems simple sometimes.
Do we not shove here, do we go like eleven?
Uh, did we call the turn?
Oh, normally.
He led the turn.
We led the turn.
I would shove. Oh, okay, so then we shove probably.
I quite like doing it cuz I feel like he's got a strong range when he calls.
I would just shove. But when we leave darn, it's like. We leave turn with a bunch of bluffs and then a bunch of them want to just steal the pot, no, did he not call with his ten? Oh, it's a four liner, so I guess not.
So many two pairs, so many four lines.
Would you call there with queen ten?
If it's two, if I'm mono, who knows? Who knows what I might do?
If I'm against them.
Hmm, yeah.
Ooh.
I mean, it's not a min raise, is it?
Are we really folding ten seven?
Yeah.
I think we're folding sevens.
I mean, ten sevens just not that good.
You know, recently. I have an approach where I was like over folding this portion of the deck here, like way over folding as we saw. And I started to defend like every single inch of my big line and I think it's a. Better approach, when you're on the big line, you should try to defend every bits of it. Every single little inch. Even maybe the ten sevens.
Yeah, you broke it, just fold.
I'm more on the old Louis side.
Yeah.
Like. I I I I tend to, I tend to like, when it's more in the starting lines of the tournament, I'm more in the chip BB realm, uh, like uh, right now. But when we're deeper, I just, I just start doing more of what you were doing before.
Yeah, they sound like crazy right now, crazy.
Is minus nine good there or bad?
Pretty, pretty, pretty good. For Sunday.
Okay.
With twenty tables. We had these.
Are you, are, are you trying to beat Nanonoko or something?
What?
Are you trying to beat Nanonoko or something? Playing twenty tables at the same time, have you tried forty?
I would go here with hearts, with diamonds, spades.
Those can check raise.
Not this one, right, this one folds, but the other ones.
Yeah.
Or is the ace six that check raises, no, no, not ace six, ace five.
You ju- you just wanna have like the good uh.
Or even ace six.
Like the wheels, what could make it straight, uh, ace six, I don't find. Ace six, ace seven, honestly, I don't find.
Look, pretty much look across the board from ace, ace nine suited and under, the clubs are folding.
Yeah.
Yeah, clubs are not loved.
Also like what I noticed here, like upper dangler to the jack, but not all of them, not queen seven, queen five. More like the ones that kind of double. Queen ten double blocks it, queen nine double blocks it.
And they're also backdoor straight draws too, though.
Yeah.
Backdoor straight draw. So queen eight less than queen nine.
So like here we say like the upper dangler, but here we see it's not all of them, it's just a bunch of them.
Yeah, and that one, there's like two danglers to the top card.
I think it's straight draw, uh, backdoor straight draw, capital is more leading.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Hmm, I'm checking. I would bet one here. Cuz if ever a miracle or six comes, wanna play for a pot, right? And then we get some cards to fold with the bet form, right?
I like checking here much more.
Why?
In game I bet.
Uh, I think, I think because uh, ten wraps uh, pretty much into his around check uh, range and.
Come on, he's so, he's so wide.
Well, yeah, he's so, he has tens, but he has so many other things that totally whipped.
And range betting here.
I would venture.
The board is really.
I like checking much, I like checking much, much more with this uh, to have, to have some of the good shots in my check range too.
Betting is the preferred option.
Our checking was fifty-five percent of the time.
We gotta call once at least.
Yeah.
Uh, we have to call.
Can even raise.
That's bad river, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, yeah, very bad, just, yeah.
Well.
You win that.
Maybe just go all in.
All in, huh? Seems good. We called with files.
Like in table ninja, thirty big blind wrenches like hundred percent shot, I don't know. Against the button.
Yeah, I think we're called every suited hand.
Oh, man.
Such a big bet.
Fold, fold.
Uh, I don't know if you could fold it pair yet.
Yeah, we can. Maybe with the spade.
I mean, it's a big bet, like.
We actually want to fold.
Like how, how we ever get into showdown here, like we just never.
Yeah, if we had a spade here, it'd probably be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's alright, cuz I really want that four on the turn.
I mean, against the bigger bets, you just tend to fold on.
He's not gonna abuse me.
Raise, I free bet, yeah.
I'm jack. It's probably. It's a majority call here. I like.
Majority, of course.
Yeah, I don't like that jack for a raise.
Now the jack is, it's a good combo, but I wanna be forty big lines and I wanna be against later positions.
Hmm. I think I prefer raising things like king eight and king nine here.
King eight, king nine, I'm, I'm not doing it, Joey. I would pick king queen here.
Can we see?
Yeah, I would be king queen there.
Not even king queen, no, it's king nine. At king nine.
Can we see for forty bigs, arrow up, up ten.
Thirty-five?
Forty.
Forty, babe.
King, jack still call against the hydro.
Because it's two EP, it's like MP, so it's like we need to be called, use like offsuit.
Not a check raise spot. Maybe just call small bit.
So if we have one spade in our hand, would it be a good check raise? The deck of spade?
Yeah, maybe.
I think we would really the king of spade, the jack of spade is not so good, but it's still an option. I see it's the other way around. The king of spade, you don't wanna do it, but the jack of spade, either.
The king goes space, we just call, yeah, to realize it.
Yep. And this one's just all.
Even not a call?
No. Twenty-five percent call, you can venture into calling there.
Call this one. So this is a check raising for sure. Just shove, maybe.
No, all in is not enough.
Uh no, no, shove, no shove, it's uh but it's it's a it's re-raising for sure. No, maybe not that, maybe not that stack, uh maybe not the that that bet size, so.
Well.
Maybe some raise and call.
If the pair was higher, we can call more often, but the eights need so much protection, I wanna raise.
Yeah, I know.
Call.
So here.
We just called this.
Yeah, probably call, yeah.
Maybe even race.
Yeah. I was actually thinking about raising, but like we saw, it's bad.
I would just call it down.
Now, I think now I think I want to raise because the SPR is too slow, too small when we get there.
I'm never raising. Oh, it's mostly raises.
Oh, wow, that's a surprise.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is a very good indication, just to think, this beer is too small. Even though we're getting good odds, to call that one big line, you know? Because also like, think what uh think what is the range that he is representing with that hand? It's also very wide range, so it benefits for you to raise your rate and the suited.
Mostly range call.
So we're raising a lot of six, six and five X here. Six, six and five X.
So can you go to the uh to the small blind range, uh what this uh what if he uh what if he see betting there like that? Specific that one, that one BB bet, what is he? Wow, okay. A lot, a lot, a lot. Interesting, yeah. Yeah, that's very interesting. Thanks.
So this is the part of the range of me attack. Alright, interesting spot. And now what?
So now, now we are in the exact part where what I said, we don't want to be in.
We can push.
I think. I I would bet ten, I would bet like ten, yeah.
Probably seven, probably seven. Oh, it's push.
Oh, all in, oh, you you your your intuition was better.
Yeah, it's a push.
Your intuition was better.
Max green.
So just a quick thought before uh this end, uh so uh the problem, I think in game is that who would uh what what are we getting called by when this uh we are only called by flashes, probably if we're two X there, like.
I disagree.
You think?
Some people.
You disagree?
Yeah, I've seen weird, yeah, yesterday was Sunday, man, people were calling with A's eyes.
Oh, yeah, sure, like, yeah, I I there there for sure is, there for sure is.
Yeah.
By the way, I had a crazy hand where I four bet with ace seven suited, a guy who three bet me a lot and that didn't solve that, I didn't saw that the big mind had already four bet, so I fired the jam uh with two uh with ace seven suited and the guy had kings and I won. When I realized that it was a five, it all in, I was like, oh, man, what what did I just do? And the other guy to my left, he folded, and the big mind, of course, he was all in, all in. Oh, that was a crazy end.
Okay.
Still, this is the part, oh, okay, I would call. Too wide. Call.
Yeah, we call.
I'm a certain amount, we're getting a lot of noise from you.
Uh sorry, I'm next to the road, I'm uh turning away from from it, I'm outside, actually, I'm uh walking away from cafe.
Can unmute yourself when you wanna talk, basically. You support.
Chip. Chip hold.
Oh, it's slow. Okay, new hand.
Getting slow.
It's really really slow.
I think we can raise this.
Um I would just call, we could, there's a problem, a sliver of raises.
I'm just throwing three bets, so I'm looking for raising my two bets that.
Nice. Check, check, do.
Lead here.
I'm I'll check again. With this size, I think we just fold.
Wait, wait.
What do you wanna?
Okay. Too fast. You're accidental, boy.
I don't, it felt like it's not really a spot for me.
Smoke.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the noise.
Oh, nowhere.
Queen six, this bottom here.
Queen six?
Yeah.
Yeah, call.
This mixes.
Mixing, right? No, this is the one. This is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We just had this previously.
We're gonna try it. Oh, my goodness. Small, ace low low, so it's small.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah. Um. Fourteen? No, 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 we're not checking laptop pair, we're in a three bad pot as the aggressor, we're never gonna check.
Yeah, I would go half pot.
Small again, or?
The SPR is less than one.
Yeah, half pot's a weird size, I think you jam or check.
Not be against you to.
You unblock a lot of draw, you unblock a lot of draws down, you unblock spades, king, queen, queen, jack, shit like that. Some ten X with a redraw, maybe, I don't know. I think, I I I don't know, I small feels bad, I think it's checker jam.
I would go fourteen.
I would jam.
Yeah, so it's not fourteen.
That's checking a lot.
Checking a lot. Oh, wow, okay.
Small feels bad, and so, and I didn't wanna check, so I jam.
Alright. Now we go all in?
Really strange, she called our three bets.
Now, this is a, this is a disaster from the turn, it's like, what the hell?
Yeah, I wouldn't go all in here because the flush draw on the board.
The back door? You scared of the back door? I ain't scared of the back door. It has to go runner, runner like that, no problem. But I from the check turn, honestly, I'm lost here. So let's explore that turn, though, maybe, because I don't know what I'm doing, so I'm not. I would barrel every ace here, so we're barreling every ace here, so what is this? Why the nine, man? Give me a break, no? Ace deuce gonna barrel? Why is a safe nut in here? What happened with it? We didn't bet it at all? Is that what?
This was a three bet pot, ace eight doesn't.
Ah, that's right, that's right. So, yeah, we barrel, I mean why check this nine? Give me a break? And it's really like the nine of spade. Okay, it comes on the river anyway, so.
I guess it's just protecting the range, right?
Yeah, yeah, ace five and ace seven are two pairs, ace nine's like our worst ace.
Okay, so we're we're protecting the range, right, with this single combo, so I guess that's why we check it though. Oh.
Call.
The thing is also the ace of spades is on the on the flop, so we shouldn't be scared much of the spades.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
The only reason I said instead of all in there is because I've been in positions before where I go up and and they have.
I think we check call this because kicker is too low, we will check raise with jack nine.
Uh I say jack eight?
Jack eight, yes.
Jack eight and above.
Well, tell you what, guys, this is not forty big lines, right? So I think I'm raising some here. Honestly, I'm going with some check raise.
Just because of the, okay.
Because we were too short, but what do I know, right?
Yeah, those small blondes.
The two, the kicker's not good enough, and he bets big as well and didn't pay attention to that. So what kind of jack, so jack eight, as we said.
Two, two overs to middle pair.
Maybe jack six, if you feel like uh.
Suited.
But not, yeah, it's really jack eight, right? The seven, usually like the seven kicker or better, maybe, here the seven is two pairs, so. So, okay, discipline, and if you bet small, if you bet small, okay, so say decided.
Interesting, that's how.
Say he goes small, do we check raise now?
So thirty percent he bet, I think we can.
We can now, if you bet small, we can, we mostly raise, wow, forty percent, right, a lot more. Anyway, oh, five on the turn, good, so we check. Now.
Raise. Yeah, I think raise small, eleven.
And why small?
Why eleven?
We need to be more aggressive on turns.
Feels like we're gonna let him.
Eleven's not aggressive at all.
That's just a call. Ah, that's right, this SPR two pairs too strong. We check and we hope you bets and then we call. We're suited.
Well, yeah.
Cool.
And you said it.
Oh.
So we can check check raise.
I don't know, can we? Would you check?
Bigs.
Max, yeah, against thirty positions.
I would I I would check raise here, we have some backdoor stuff.
I would not raise this, I would fold.
Actually, I suppose like we have no overcards, so do we?
I like rerace because of the two.
I would also.
So like jack seven, I would raise jack nine.
Okay.
No, it's just.
Jack ten. Jack seven is my worst diamond here, my worst backdoor flush is jack seven.
I mean, we need, we need cards which like wrap around the cards on the board, right?
That's what I'm saying. Jack eight's the worst one.
That's interesting.
Yeah. Alright.